Monday, December 19th, 2016, we have a forum and the agenda was properly posted?
Yes.
Okay, let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item four is public appearances. This is public's opportunity to speak about any subject that's not a specific agenda item. Anybody?
No.
Okay. Number five, discuss and consider the minutes of the regular village board meeting of December 5th.
Motion to approve the minutes as presented?
Second.
Motion and second to approve as presented. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes? Six A, discuss and consider Monona Grove Cross Country Team Proclamation. Should I read it first?
Well, you want me to introduce?
Yeah, I'll let Jennifer.
And then we're gonna have them instead of speaking.
Sure.
So, as most of you may know, our cross-country team has been gaining steam over the past couple of years, and this year was a particularly successful year for them. So, we've invited the team and Coach Deuce to join us today. So, if you guys wanna come on up and...
Stand over there if you could. The camera will be able to get you over to that side.
Is it gonna talk right here?
Perfect.
You didn't know where you're gonna go and film it?
Usually they're running too fast so you can't film.
I'm Coach Deuce from Monona Grove. I'll let these guys introduce themselves and then we'll... I'll say something briefly. Go ahead.
I'm Eddie.
I'm Coach Hunter.
I'm Soren.
I'm Charlie.
I'm Alexander.
Carl.
James.
So, I've been coaching Monona Grove Cross Country for five years now. I've been teaching in the district. This is my 10th year. This year, the Monona Grove Cross Country Team won their first conference championship in 53 years and won... or went to state for the first time since 1979. So, they had a fantastic year. We wanna thank you guys for having us here today. Thank the community, both in Cottage Grove and Monona, the district for supporting us. And, you know, these guys worked really, really hard. We have big goals for next year, but it was a great year and we appreciate the recognition. So, thank you very much for that.
So, I assume many of you understand that success and hard work go hand in hand, but I don't think I truly got to see what hard work looked like until I joined this team. These boys have worked since January to get to where they are. And it just, you know, the coolest thing was that not a single person, like, worked harder than anybody else. Everybody worked with everything they had every day. And that's something special that I don't think I might ever get to see for the rest of my life. So, it means so much to get recognition for the hard work that we put in, and thank you so much.
Thank you.
So, a lot of our job as a board entails of budgets and budgeting and making good decisions. And this is the best part of what I do, my role on the board, seeing the kids and seeing how hard you work. A lot of your kids are in my son's class, and I'm friends with your parents, and I watch the season even though I don't personally run. I watched your season with great interest, and as a community, it's just so wonderful to see talented, dedicated kids working hard towards a goal. So, congratulations to a great season, and going forward, I'm sure we'll see great things.
Thank you very much. I have the proclamation here. I'm not normally given to reading these, but there's only three or four wherethes, so I'll go ahead and read it. Whereas the Monona Grove Cross Country Team won the 2016 WIA Division One Conference Championship on October 19th, 2016, and whereas this represents the team's first conference win in 50-plus, I believe you said 53 years. Whereas, in order to give recognition to its considerable achievement, the Village of Cottage Grove Board of Trustees hereby congratulates the 2016 Monona Grove High School Cross Country Team on its exemplary season culminating in its first state competition since 1979. Whereas perseverance and dedication are commendable, and the players and coaches exemplary to and representative of our community is appreciated, now therefore be it resolved that I, Jack Henrick, Village President, and on behalf of the village board hereby commend and congratulate the 2016 Monona Grove Cross Country Team on their accomplishments and ask the community to join me in celebrating their successful season. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Merry Christmas.
Generally, you find your cross-country guys are also high-character people who, many of them end up at law school, so...
And it's only running that's cross-country.
And we are always running.
And then you lost them.
Well, yeah.
All right. Item six B, discuss and consider January 2nd, 2017 village board meeting. Any thoughts or discussions? Probably Matt?
Sounds horrible.
Yeah, it does, if it is called, but Matt, Lee, any reschedule to be...
We're not really anticipating any significant agenda items. Should the most important one potentially could be taken care of. The one on the most people's radar, the Summit Transaction could be taken care of tonight, and then many of the other items are yet to come from Plan Commission, so Plan Commission would continue as scheduled. So, there isn't a pressing need. However, it could be rescheduled potentially on the Thursday of that week, which should have that date in front of me.
The 5th?
Yeah.
You wanna just technically finish the 5th and then...
There is pure court that night. Pure court's usually done... they're usually done around 5:30, so...
Is there a... I'm sorry.
There aren't any agenda items that I can think of.
I mean, can we... is this what's on the table right now?
Yeah.
We just have the 18th, and then if we need a special meeting, call on?
Right.
I should just cancel it now?
Yeah.
Plan on the 18th.
When is the Plan Commission?
It would be the 2nd Wednesday, so after that.
Yeah, I mean, Plan Commission is before that, so...
It would be the 11th.
Yeah, Plan Commission is January 11th, so, I mean, yeah. We could do the 18th or 16th.
Yeah.
Monday, the 16th would be the regular.
Thanks for making that.
If we're good until that point, yeah.
I mean, certainly if something came up that was urgent, we can schedule as needed then before that, but otherwise, we'll just stick with that one in January.
Okay.
We'll make a motion to cancel January 2nd meeting and stay on track for January 16th, 2017 meeting.
How about 2018?
Seventeen. You're wondering your head.
Well, the 18th.
Oh. I got it right in front of me.
Yeah, that is.
Second.
Okay. January 16th, 2017. Does that work for everybody? Okay. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, January 16th it is. Item six C, discuss and consider 2017 Colonial Club Senior Activities Center Agreement.
Both the Colonial Club Agreement and also the Youth Services Agreement received a substantial amount of discussion last year. The biggest change for the Colonial Club was the fact that they, in terms of their presenting services, and as you may recall, at least two or three times during the year, someone from Colonial Club came and talked about the services that they were providing. The finances for what they're asking for are in... have been approved in the agenda or budget, and so I have the draft agreement for services that would be the same as last year's for running for a one-year period.
Lee, did you verify that the same person is the Director of Services?
I sent an email over to Bob Powers with the understanding that I might have to get that information, but I think she is, and I think the last time... I think she was the person that came here in September. Remember, she gave that really long discussion?
Yep. Yeah.
So...
So, it's a year-to-year agreement?
Right.
And nothing has substantially changed?
Not that time where it makes sense to me to do the year-to-year.
Motion to approve the Colonial Club Senior Activities Center Agreement for 2017?
Second.
Motion and second to approve the 2017 Colonial Club Senior Activities Center Agreement. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay, along the same lines, you have the Youth Services Contract that received probably more discussion last year than in all previous years combined. And the subject of the discussion was the processing of cases assigned by the village to the municipal court, and language was added where no case referral will involve an individual who has attained the age of 18, who has not enrolled in high school at the time of his or her offense. Traffic referrals shall be limited to determining potential alternative disposition to the payment of forfeitures adjudicated with first offense traffic violations. And the idea... the question was that some things were being referred to pure court, and then an individual might get a deferral of some kind, and so it's like they could... they got a free traffic violation. That was something that Dan had brought up, and so we changed the language last year. And as I... I know I've asked a couple of times during the course of the year if that seems to be working well, and from everything I hear, it is.
Yes, it seems like it's working the way it's intended. There's deals on forfeiture amounts, but not the points themselves.
Right.
I think that was their intent.
Right. That was the only subject of controversy or question last year. So, we've done... so I drafted a revised contract with retaining all of the language that we approved last year.
Any comments, questions on this? Okay, not all move approval of Youth Services Agreement.
I'll second.
Motion and second to approve the Briar Patch Youth Services Agreement?
It's actually, I think, it's called Southern...
Or Southern Wisconsin?
Yeah, it was formerly Briar Patch. Or, no, you're right, Jack. I'm sorry.
It is Briar Patch.
I apologize.
It was Briar Patch.
Briar Patch, formerly known as Youth Services of Southern Wisconsin.
He was gonna say it 'cause it's listed in the contract.
Yep.
Okay. Any other discussion?
So, assuming the contract is right.
That's right.
All right. If not, we have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. Six E, discuss and consider Resolution 2016-08, authorizing issuance and sale of covenants... issuance and sale of up to $1,122,400 in water system revenue bonds, Series 2016, and providing for other details and covenants with respect thereto Mike and Aaron.
Well, resolution and documents are all put together by Quirrells and Bradhear Bond Council, and we received all that, and Deb was preparing those this evening for Jack's signature later. This is for the safe drinking water loan to cover the gas and road water main extension, and this is all covered in the rate case.
Any other comments or questions on that item? All right. Well, I will move approval of the Resolution 2016-08 for the issuance and sale of the $1,122,400 water system revenue bonds. Any...
Second.
Second. Any other discussion?
Alex, in years past, you'd asked me if I had read all of these, and the answer is no, because it's drafted by Bond Council, and, I mean, I just generally have looked at some of the information, but this is pretty boilerplate from year to year, and I think this is the third one that we've done in the last five years or so.
There's a pretty extensive definitions section to choose from first.
It was. Yes.
Yep. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. Six F, discuss and consider Resolution 2016-09, Resolution declaring intent to exercise special assessment, police power under Section 660703 Wisconsin statutes for Seldell Platte reconstruction. That sounds probably a bit more intimidating than it really is, but it's the Seldell Platte that is in the ironed curb and gutter. Mike, if you wanna come up here and give us some insight on that?
Did you bring the map?
No, it's frozen to the car.
The internet is frozen tonight.
This, according to, you know, the procedures we follow with the league of municipalities is to conduct a preliminary resolution before the final resolution, which would be scheduled in January at the second meeting or only meeting.
Yep.
And that will include a public hearing. So, residents, subject to the special assessment, will have their chance to look at the assessment and then comment, provide public comment at that. This just instructs us to prepare a report for the assessment and indicates that it'll be for naming the roads within the subdivision and for curbing gutter and driveway aprons.
Okay. Pretty academic. Any questions for Mike? I mean, this is something that residents themselves wanted done for a while, so it improves the drainage and things like that.
Yeah, and I was... when we do this, state that the village, unlike a lot of communities, has very clear ordinance for special assessment in the roadway section, and so it's really not a if. It's just kind of setting up the correct policies and making sure we follow the right procedures.
Okay. All right. Any other questions for Mike?
Motion to approve Resolution 2016-9?
Okay.
Need to read that?
No. Motion by Alex and second by Jennifer for the Seldell Platte Special Assessment, Police Power under Wisconsin statutes. Any questions, discussions? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? You're good. Thank you, Mike. Okay, we're down at item seven. Reports from village boards, commissions, and committees. Joint Utility, Public Works, and Communities?
So, we ran a joint meeting this time. The Seldell Platte was really the key to joining these two meetings where Public Works and Prophecy was talking about the roadways and the groundwater runoff issues, and then the Utility Commission was there for the sewer and the plumbing, basically, section of the process. So, rather than bring Mike in twice again for two presentations, he did the one presentation, and we had the one group meeting. Very good turnout again, as we had the last time, so quite a few of the residents were there. I think it was a little bit less than last time. Very interested into what's going on. JJ is very receptive to all the information and comments, as well as Mike, and they're working on the FAQ, which they wanna make sure gets posted up on the website. And after all the drawings and documents are even approved, I think there's gonna be some ways that we can get those out to the community members as well, so that they don't necessarily have to come in all the time and ask for that stuff.
I think it's been a while since we've done a project with a special assessment in that I remember.
On Main Street.
Yeah, Main Street.
Okay.
So, hopefully with the new website, we can leverage information. I mean, there's always that "we didn't know" sort of thing kind of buzzing around the room, and so we try to make clear that all the information is out there. All you need to do is either can't get ahold of it, reach out and ask. But there are always somebody... there's always somebody there. Call, leave a message if you don't get somebody, and we're responsive.
Do folks know how much... do they have an idea how much it's gonna get done for?
The average sort of...
They talked about the numbers. I wish Mike was still here.
Yes.
Oh, there he is.
He's back there.
You had... we had about 16-foot, $16 per foot for curbing gutter was the number we mentioned, and $8 a cubic foot for the driveway was the number. So, they can sort of rough calculate what they're gonna end up paying. So, the curb and gutter is half. The village is not part of it. Do you wanna come up and just fill in the numbers, 'cause I don't wanna misspeak for what you were talking about? The... I know the sewer and utilities, all that's covered under the utility.
The driveway approach is like a 10-inch. It's not like typical for us.
Six to seven. Yeah. That... the homeowner pays 100% of the driveway apron replacement unless we're changing the street grade by six inches or more at the driveway, and there are some of those in that case, because we're trying to improve drainage overall.
Sure.
The village picks that up. If they had existing curb and gutter, which maybe a third of the residents have, they pay 50%. If they didn't have any curb and gutter, they pay 100% for the curb and gutter. So, that's outlined in the ordinance, and like I say, it's very clear here in many communities, they have, you know, policies and things like that that you try to look up, but it's in the ordinance, so it helps out.
So, with the resolution earlier, now you're gonna go and get the detailed numbers so that now we know what each home... each home is gonna have its own dollar value associated with it, and at that point, they can also pick, do I wanna pay it now, or do I wanna defer payments over so many years or whatever?
Yeah, and Deb sets something up. Depending on the size of the assessment, how many years they can pay, put it on their tax form.
Okay.
Fair enough.
Okay.
Just general stuff in the meeting approved.
All right. Community Development Authority, we met on the 12th. I guess the highlights of the meeting where we have the videos tweaked, thanks to Aaron for the NAD reps, which is Madison Area Economic Development Guide, which will be on the website soon if they're not. And then we talked about land uses north of I-94, but I'll let Aaron talk about that.
Yeah, we're gonna work with the CDA, trying to identify the right mix, the highest and best uses north of the freeway. We're gonna start doing that. We're gonna start collecting data from similar areas around Dane County so we can look at property values and employment levels for similar developments and just have that data to work from, along with absorption rates and things like that. And Kyle Anos from Water Bush is gonna help with that as well.
Any questions for Aaron? The videos look good. I mean, they just did a couple edits, and it's very professional.
They made their final tweaks, and we signed off on them today, so...
Okay.
Good, thank you. Deer Grove EMS, Commissioner Harvey and John.
First, on the regionalization, we met, because it was the Tuesday after our last board meeting, we... Gary, the village representative from Deerfield, had created a draft... was in the process of creating a draft, request for proposal for a consultant to review all of the statistics that are being collected by each of the chief of the districts, so that the cost of the consultant can be reduced significantly because of that. There was general... appeared to be general acceptance of the idea. The, you know, it's a work in progress, obviously. I will say that we received word today. I received word from Chief Urshin that Marshall has submitted a letter indicating that they're going to withdraw from the Marshall Agreement at the end of next year, which may or may not affect any regionalization plans. I think they're protecting themselves so that they can pull out if they need to at the end of 17. They just... our sense is that they want some action taken so that they know which direction to go.
Understandable. This has been going on for a while.
And so, but, like I said, it... the representatives that were there seemed open to the full consultation with a professional on evaluating what the equipment needs are in a larger district, what the staffing needs are in a larger district, rather than somebody directly involved trying to come up with that and getting somebody offended because they're not getting what they think they need.
Sure. Harvey, does the consultant also plan to deal with this whole kind of size of each municipality and then their respective contribution?
I don't recall if that was in the RFP or not, but certainly I can mention that.
I think we talked also about a weighted vote based on population. Is it...
That's part of the intergovernmental agreement, and there's gonna be several things that are going on kind of simultaneously. The RFP, the intergovernmental agreement, and it's kind of... it's kind of a working several different fronts at the same time, so they can come up with a proposal to bring to the various boards and say, are you interested in continuing?
I would just add that I would think a weighted vote on amount paid in would make more sense, and maybe a community, if they would want to have more of a say, they'd have the ability to, you know, option. I don't think that's been talked about before. If the community wanted to pay more, maybe they, you know, they could have more of a say as well.
Okay.
Something to discuss. Anything else?
That was it for the regionalization stuff for the regular Deer Grove EMS. We met last Thursday. The run fees are over... we're doing well with the run fees. We're at $470,000. Budget for the year was $405,000, so we're significantly ahead of budget, but we are approximately $30,000 behind last year. Part of that is a reduction in calls. Part of the reduction in calls is due to not going on all the fire calls, but they used to go on all the fire calls. There have been no write-offs this year of bad accounts. The audit will be started at the end of January. We... I'm trying to think of it as... We had an update on it.
Rate survey.
Pardon me?
The rate survey.
Oh, yeah. We did a rate survey, thank you, for area charges, and we only decided to change one of our rates, which was the mileage. We used to be charging $17 per mile, and we're gonna go up to $18 per mile. Otherwise, our rates are gonna stay the same. And that was based on a variety of communities, not necessarily all in Dane County, but several of similar size to Deer Grove. Thank you, John.
Harvey, do you think that the changes that they made with regard to the agency that was working with you, does that seem to account for the fact that there are no write-offs at all? Because weren't the write-offs pretty high for a while?
They were high in earlier years, and, yeah, they changed the processes.
Okay.
I think it was the last couple of years that the write-offs have been pretty much nothing.
Right.
It's new billing software, the new billing service. I'm not sure which, but...
New billing software.
Yeah.
It makes a difference, you know, and... because we looked at... we actually did do a couple of years ago. I wasn't on the commission, but we did do a RFP, I think, for billing companies.
Yep.
And we ended up with the same one.
Okay.
But they did get some new software, which didn't make a difference. There are some volunteers that are going to start some training in the new year. Things got delayed with the holidays and everything. DaneCom, when connected, it's much clearer. DaneCom, when connected, it's much clearer. Some buildings are still a challenge. And we're aware of that.
You could at least hear static in some talk before, but.
The, the advantage that EMS has is that they're often taking, they're usually often taking somebody out of the building so that they're able to re-establish communications quite easily. And then, you know, there's been a lot of community requests. They've done their regular time at, like Glenwood and Taylor Ridge, at the Deerfield Community Center. And there's been some minor repairs at each of the stations.
Alex had a question.
Why did they stop going to fire calls?
That I don't have an answer to.
It just seems, I mean, like, I mean, they're twenty-four hour schedules and if they're in the house, they're really drawn to the call. If they can't divert or whatever, but.
One item that is on the report that hasn't been there before, and it was brought up as part of the reason, part of the regionalization discussion, but also was actually prompted this to be recorded. There are certain number of calls that are missed that we have to request mutual aid for. And if, if there was the ability to have another ambulance in service, or, this would be a call that would be missed when our ambulance is out on another call.
Yeah, if we could staff the second ambulance, we wouldn't miss the call.
Right.
Yeah.
And, though, there have been six of those for November, there were six of those in November.
Okay. So, yeah, we're talking.
Three, three hundred something, how many calls? We get a lot of calls.
Year to date, eight hundred and forty-five calls year to date.
Okay. Did they say anything about the need for volunteers? I saw something on the bulletin board at Piggly Wiggly that they're looking for volunteers.
Yeah, they're, they're looking for more volunteers.
All right.
Anything else, John?
Nothing else on that.
All right. Reports from village officers. Troy?
I'd just like to say thank you to Public Works and JJ and your team for the last couple of weekends. Maybe Mother Nature will give you a weekend or two off here soon.
Maybe April. Thank you. Kyle?
Well, like most of you guys know, I have a little one at home, so I've decided today that I'm not going to rerun. So challenging family obligations and work hours and stuff, so putting in non-candidacy papers today. I encourage the public to look into running for a seat coming up in April. Look forward to helping until April. And really enjoyed working with all of you guys and kind of appreciate all the things you guys do behind the scenes. Thank you.
You got a future trustee on board. All right, Alex?
And as we, I sort of reflected on the downtime here, just about the cross-country team proclamation, you know, I just also wanted to thank the parents and the support behind the team member. You know, a lot of times that's, they're the ones who drove them to practice, they're the ones who get out of bed, they're the ones who made the lunches. And even bringing them in front of us today so that we can recognize their achievement. So thanks, Jen, and to the rest of the support group.
Okay.
Reflecting a little bit also with Kyle, my 2017 work schedule is going to be pretty enormous on my day job. And with that, I'm also going to be submitting my petition for non-candidacy for 2017. So I had a good time out here. I think we made some, some progress on some items and made some, some friends and maybe not so many. Yeah, also created some, some challenges as well. Let's just leave it at that. And, but it's been a good two years and I wish you guys the best of luck. And hopefully I can still push through at the most rest of 2017, but we'll see how my work schedule flows as well.
Learn your French?
I gotta learn French.
All right.
Thank you, Happy New Year, Merry Christmas.
Jennifer?
No report.
Harvey?
No report.
John?
I just want to tell the community I have a, have a safe and happy holidays, so.
Very good. The only thing I have to say is also thanks to Kyle and Alex. I mean, nobody signs up for this really knowing what they're getting into. And I can certainly understand having number three. And job obligation, so thank you for your service. All right. Lee?
Just a quick reminder to everyone, and particularly those who are on joint boards, that our board has always taken a position that when it comes to any grants or when we're going out for money from either the state or the feds, that we like to get those vetted. It's not, it's not really the issue with Deer Grove because you've got Dan Barker. But we do like to make sure that we take a look at, at those because we've run into some situations in the past where there are strings attached to these things that we didn't really expect. That's, other than that, that's it.
Matt? Just echoing Troy's comments on the snowfalling efforts were, were great. And hopefully you guys get some good information from JJ sends the update on, on the storm. I think that was a great idea, doing that, so you're all aware of what's out there. And they always do a good job and generally, you know, it's impressive when you only get a couple complaints because you always get, you always get some. And this time we didn't get any, which is amazing because it was a pretty tricky weekend otherwise, so.
It was. I mean, it lasted a few days. It wasn't like one snowfall and you're done and go home. That's worse.
The guys, the guys all do a fantastic job. Hopefully they do get a weekend off here at some point.
Yeah. If you can make it snow just on weekends, that would be awesome. Erin?
Can I? You want progress reporting, so.
Police chief, Dan?
Uh, nothing.
Okay. All right, that's it.
Okay, well, I was just going to put the reminder out there again of non-candidacy. The deadline is December twenty-third. That is a holiday for us, but I will be available via email because we do have to be here
Oh.
to, to collect those. So if anybody has anything, they can send it to me. Also nomination papers and declaration of candidacy deadline is January third by 5:00 PM. So you want to get those in. And I wanted to touch on this, I didn't the last time, was the update or how the recount went at Dane County. Just so everybody knows, I spent December third there, myself and the chief election inspector, Bev, who is amazing. I'd like to say thank you very much for that, along with all poll workers. So Harvey, thank you. Did an excellent job. We had only two changes and they were, one was a write-in where they didn't circle the oval, so the machine didn't catch it. But I do believe we counted it on election night. And the other was a creatively marked ballot. So overall, we did very well. So I just wanted you to know how that went. It did take Dane County ten days to complete the recount, but they did do it ahead of schedule. So it was, it was an adventure, but.
First one I remember, but thank you for doing that.
And then there's an open records request that we're waiting to get a ruling on. Someone that, basement organization sent out open records request that has sixty-three different sections to the request. And it's pretty overbearing just, just on copies alone. Madison looked into their, their estimate of what they would need to, to charge, and it's five thousand dollars of copy, of just copying.
So that's an open record request that also affects the village?
I think they made a request, made potentially to every, every community in Wisconsin.
Okay.
What we've done in the past, this is the last time that we got a rash of these, was the Bush-Gore candidacy in the election, and there was one after that, that they're national groups, they send out these blanket requests. And what we, what the individual attorneys have done is in lieu of trying to come up with their own opinion, they, we may have an opinion, but it's better if we can do it, consolidate our opinions into one, so we get to the state elections board or whatever their call now. And supposedly we're going to get a, a, an opinion from them. And also Dane County has, has taken a position in the past.
But it would really block us down because obviously not as much staff and it would take a lot of redaction. For instance, some, one of the requests is for new voter registration. So that means Lisa's going to have to go through those and redact names and addresses and.
But you can send somebody a bill.
It's minimal, it's twenty-five cents a page.
So you don't get, you don't get to recover.
With our limited staff, that's a real.
Right, yeah.
Okay.
But this is unified from the state, the county on what to do.
Sure.
So.
This so far is the biggest open records request we've ever gotten, sixty separate items.
It's Watergate.
So.
It's a big one.
Thank you. Okay. Anything else, Lisa?
That's it.
Okay. Number nine, communications and miscellaneous business, discuss approval of vouchers.
Motion to approve vouchers as presented.
Second.
Motion and second to approve vouchers as presented. Any other discussion?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
More, College Town, page five, almost near the bottom, College Town Sports.
T-shirts.
T-shirts? College Town Sports.
Is that under Parks?
Employee logo wear staff jackets. Is that Parks?
It's, it's staff, Sean's actually wearing, wearing one in general, just, just, you know, village logos, shirts for staff going, you know, going to something to wear, going to conferences, that sort of thing. Actually received the anonymous donation for four hundred dollars to cover most of that. There'll probably be one, one other order, but it all, it all gets fed into individual department miscellaneous budgets. But we're just talking a shirt or two per employee, just to have something official for staff to wear, so.
Okay.
Okay. Yep. Thank you.
Any other questions, discussion? If not, all in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. Any correspondence?
No.
Future agenda items, anything from staff, trustees that we want to keep on the agenda?
We'll have the Seldell.
Seldell Platte? Yep. We'll put that on. Anything planning or police or administrative?
There could be some planning commission items, but
Okay.
to be determined for now.
Okay. Fair enough. Guess that brings us to item ten. At this point, I'll move that the Village of Cottage Grove Village Board enter into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statute nineteen eighty-five, pair and one pair and E, deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public property, investing of public funds, conducting other specified business whenever competitive and or bargaining reasons require a closed session. Negotiate terms for potential development in Commerce Park with Summit Credit Union and Landmark Corporation. We'll need a second from Jennifer. We'll need a roll call vote. Troy?
Aye.
Kyle?
Aye.
Aye, Alex?
Aye.
Jennifer?
Aye.
Harvey?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
We're in closed session?